In the interest of respect for the people who showed up on time, we're going to call the meeting to order. And I do know that two board members did excuse themselves because for health reasons. That's Dr. Gomez and Mr. Kalasian. I haven't heard from Tracy Lambert or John French.
I know Tracy's coming.
Okay, good. But I think because we don't have to take any action tonight, we can just call the meeting to order and with those present.
My God.
I will assure anybody who drove a long distance that I just drove here from Meriden and the driving was absolutely fine. No slippery roads.
Oh, good to know.
Even going over the Bolton Knott.
So I can go ahead and start?
Okay, you want to get started?
Yeah, so a little last meeting that took place on January 31st, we went over the cost drivers and that is in your packet. We went over the cost drivers, we went over the efficiencies, contractual obligations, stop requests, and we presented three scenarios to you. Scenario one, two, and three. At that particular time in scenario three, we had a change of $2,495, but we have 5.3% increase. So today what I will present to you is scenario four, five, six, and seven for you to see the changes that we are making and for you to give us feedback and suggestion. I'm going to stay here, you can put it up there. So scenario four, so I'm going to go ahead and start with scenario four unless you have any question about scenario three.
Do you have any questions or should we just dive right in?
No, let's just dive right in.
Because we've already gone to one, two.
You already want one, two, and three, right? Others want to have?
We may go back when we get to discussion and questions.
So that's why I put all of them in one packet so you can have.
Wonderful, thanks.
So in scenario four, we have put in $500,000 for transportation in scenario three. So we decreased transportation here to 365. So we took out $200,000 from transportation.
And we'll let you walk us through it as we can go back and ask.
So, okay, so we have included in scenario one, two, and three, $500,000 for transportation and we decreased that to 365. We decreased one uncertified media specialist. So this library have a media specialist certified and an uncertified media specialist. There is a decrease of one secretary and this is due to retirement, that means somebody's going to lose their job, but this is due to retirement. We are decreasing to, we put ICO interventionists, but we believe it's going to be ICs and not interventionists. We increased and then we went back and increased technology. If you take a look in scenario one, two, and three, we have put back technology and we have taken it out, but now we went back and put 160,000 back in technology. We decreased two stipends and so that total adjustment is 477,000, bring us to a 4.3. So we went from 5.3 to 4.3 and the adjustment is $477,000. So that's scenario four. Then we went to a scenario five.
Oh, maybe we could ask a question on the scenario.
Sure.
Of course you need one.
Yeah, I'm going to give you one. Right now, just making sure, here.
So before you came, we talked about at the last budget workshop, we went through scenarios one through three.
Yes.
Which are in this packet, but we're going to go, we're starting with scenario four and we're going to go through four, five, six, and seven. Okay?
Thank you.
So feel free to ask any questions on scenario four.
What are the two stipends?
Those are stipend for the ICs. The IC, instructional consultant receives stipend also.
Okay.
And can you, for newer board members, can you explain what an IC is versus an interventionist?
Yes, so IC is the person that works with data in the schools, in the school, those are the ones that handle all the datas, and the interventionists are the ones that work providing extra support to students.
So the IC is typically a teacher who then receives a stipend on top of?
On top, right, right.
Okay.
So if we want to go with two interventionists, then we can decrease that stipend because it's not needed. The interventionists do not receive stipend, only the ICs.
Okay. With all the work that we're doing with SRBI, RTI, whatever they call it now, I would advise against cutting interventions because it sounds like we probably need them, especially last thing we were talking about the scheduling issues.
You're totally right. We don't want to eliminate intervention because of putting multi-tier.
Yeah.
So referring out how we do this. There is a way of eliminating, I think, eliminating two positions in some schools because of the size. We could combine the coaches with an interventionist because some schools are only like 278 students. The larger school like Cameron Wyndham, that will not be the case. Or a Nacho that is in great need, with like a Sweeney maybe or William Center because they're so small. There could be a combination there of data, ICO, IC interventionists.
Now, are all of our interventionists certified teachers?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Right, Jolene?
Yes.
Yes, they are. And all the ICs are certified teachers.
Any other questions on this one? Yes, I have a question about how you came to the 365, 850 rather than the, I think it was 500,000.
So, and so he has always been that we are always putting in more money for transportation during the school year. We always put about 500,000 plus for transportation and at the end of the year we make that transfer. So we did put in 500 plus, 560 something.
565, 850.
Exactly, we did put it for transportation, it's in the book. But as we start looking at making cuts and we want to stay as far away from the classroom, we went back and reduced transportation. You know, it may come back to hurdles.
The problem I have with that is, is that you can reduce it in the budget, but you're not actually going to reduce it. And for at least the last five years running, we've ended up doing a transfer.
Right.
Right? Which is why it's there in the first place. And what I recommended to Mr. Johnson yesterday was that we do the transfer now, put the 565,000, 500,000 in the budget. And where would he get the money from? And where he's gotten the money from almost every year is from the certified teaching budget. And the reason he's been able to get it from there is because we never actually have all the teachers, teaching positions filled all of the time.
However, you're totally right, for the last five years, Mr. Johnson has been under fund transportation and funded at the end of the year. That's correct. I think we're getting much, much better HR at making sure that we have teachers, certified teachers at the beginning of the school year. I think this year the numbers are much less than when I started three years ago, four years ago. I don't know the exact number, Jolene, if you know the exact number. But I know that every year those numbers have been reduced.
This one?
Sure, sure.
Still, I don't, I don't, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't have to come out of that line, but it's going to come out of somewhere. We are going to pay that $500,000.
And you're correct, and you're right.
So we should have it in the budget and we should figure out now where we're going to get the 500,000 from.
Yeah, so that's the reason why this is a workshop, it's not a final, it's still a workshop, that way you guys can give us some suggestion. We took it out of transportation, your argument is very, very valid. Either you paid now or you paid later. But we're going to pay somewhere or the other. Okay, so we thought the best way to take out of transportation, but it could be taken out of some other. But you're right.
Or several places.
Or several places, yeah.
But $565,000, if that's what it is.
Additional.
Is to transfer out of other places, the slimmer we make our budget.
The harder it gets to find that.
The harder it gets to find that during the course of the year.
Yeah, well, the question is, is we know we're going to spend it, it should be in the budget.
Right.
We should think about where we have to make cuts in other places to pay for it. It's not the whole 565, it's about 500 because some of that increase is, well, 65 of it at least is a different, a new bus, right? An additional bus.
Yeah, but we need a new bus.
You already explained it, we.
We do need a new bus.
All right, so.
So let's go through it and then we see your suggestion.
And I would argue that we're going to get a chunk of that money out of the certified teaching budget. And I know you're doing better and better at hiring all of the teachers on the first day of September, but we also have teachers that leave in August, we have other staff that leave. We never have everybody, every line filled for the entire school year, even if people leave in the middle of the year somewhere. The other thing that I think causes there to be funds available in that line is that the budget.
It's based in the average, not in actual.
Yes, based on an average teacher, whereas you fill positions largely with new teachers who get paid less than that.
So a suggestion could be, if I'm taking it correctly, put back the $200,000 back in transportation and see if we can get it out of salaries.
In other places.
And other places. I mean, if that's what, you know.
So that's a suggestion, we're not voting on anything tonight.
No.
But I think both of us brought it up because it's pretty convincing that we spend the money.
Oh, no.
On a consistent basis.
No, at the end of the year we're making the transfer.
After four or five years of finding the transfer, you know you're going to spend the money.
Going through the dance of doing the transfers is, you know, let's just be honest about how much transportation is costing us.
I totally agree. Chris felt more comfortable with this, but I totally agree. Okay, so then scenario four is a continuation, so now we move in from 4.3.
Any questions on scenario four before we move along? I know you came in a little late.
I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Not a problem. When I get home and if I have questions, I'll email you guys.
So now we move in from 4.3 to 3.9, so this is a scenario five. So we decreased that technology, remember we had that technology in there?
600 and?
Yeah, but we have, we put an amount in there, we took the 160 out, so now we went back and took that 160,000 that were out. So we put some already in the budget, but not all of it.
The total was 695?
600 and something.
I thought it was 660 or something?
Yeah, 600 and something. So we did put some of it, but not all of it. Okay? So we need to look at scenario three, how much do we put in there? In my scenario three here. Well, the total of 600 and something for technology.
Technology was 656,000. Under the, in the presentation about projected budget.
Okay.
Okay, that includes the Chromebooks, the server refresh, the teacher laptop refresh.
And at the time, we were hoping, or there was a thought that maybe we could get that money from the.
From the town.
From the fund balance. But Mr. Johnson sent us, well, he sent the superintendent and the town manager at least, an analysis of the fund balance yesterday that essentially says that there is no longer a surplus in the fund balance. So there's not an extra $600,000 in there. So we're not going to get it from the fund balance. It's going to, it's either going to be in the budget or we're not going to spend it.
Why didn't the rest of us see that? Because we were requested at the last meeting.
Because he sent it to the town manager and the superintendent, I think I got a copy because of.
It came from the town manager.
Did you see it, Lynn?
No, no. The town manager, but we had asked for that answer.
Right, right.
I think we sent it out, we did send out the fund balance to you in my packet.
Not if it came out yesterday.
He said.
The number that he gave us, oh, he said he did not have the numbers ready.
He didn't have it.
He had the numbers ready.
But he did have it, but he did send it to the town manager yesterday. I asked him.
So it wasn't I who sent it, Mrs. Lambert, it was Mr. Johnson who sent it. He said he didn't have the numbers.
Yeah, he did. He responded, I did send you a copy of the email that I sent to him asking the questions about the transportation budget.
I did see that.
And, okay, well, he didn't reply to the whole board, he replied to me.
You're right, yeah.
Well, we can make sure everybody else gets that report.
But I can, I can send you the, what he replied to me, that's not a problem, it's just a.
But we should all have the same information going into this.
Well, I just told you, but, but in fact, I said, I told you last night, if you were listening, that there's no more, there are no more cookies in the cookie jar, that's.
I understand that.
I mean, I think the point is.
Yes.
That Mr. Johnson should know that when he's responding to the, to the board, a board request, that his response should go to everybody.
Well, I think, I think the protocol was he should have given me the information and I'm the one that sent it to all the board member, but he didn't send it directly to me.
We can correct that in the future, but I just want to clarify in case.
That's how come I got it.
I want to clarify in case anybody's listening, that just because Mr. Sewell said that there isn't money in the, in the fund balance, it doesn't mean there's no money in the fund balance.
It means there's no extra.
The town has a undesignedated fund balance, which is healthy, it's just that it's now down at the lower range of health so that if we start dipping into it, we affect our town's bond rating and other, our ability to borrow potentially and those kinds of things if we go too deep into it. So I can imagine that the finance, the Board of Finance is going to be hesitant to dip into it, except for.
I don't remember the amount that he said, was it 7 million or something?
It's about $7 million that's, well, it's not exactly there yet, but there are already some commitments to it. So he's forecasting where he's going to be for the next fiscal year relative to the towns, both the town, the service districts, and the board's expenditures. So essentially what you've got is a rainy day fund against the obligations, the financial obligations that the town has. And it's basically your emergency money. And so there's roughly 10% of all the money that the town spends is saved, I mean, if you can, if you can do it, most households are advised to keep three months' worth of, three to six months' worth of cash on hand in case, you know, something happens.
Well, the point is.
Not everybody can do it, but that's, that's the idea.
That town is unlikely going to be in the position to pay for.
Yes, they're not going to have $600,000 that they can devote to it.
So if you take a look, we had 690 before in technology, we took it out of the budget. In scenario three, we took, different scenario, have it in and have it out. We took it out. However, in scenario four, we put 160,000 of technology back into the budget. If you go to scenario five, we took that 160,000 back out again.
But would that mean there's still 500 and some odd thousand?
730?
Yeah.
Somewhere.
Yes.
Okay.
Although.
Okay, so we took it out and we also put those two stipend back that we have taken out. So that gave us a change of 151,000, we brought it down to 3.9 from the 4.3.
What were the stipends for, you might have discussed earlier?
ICs, ICs. ICs.
They were on the previous scenario?
Right. So now we go to scenario six. I've looked at our benefits and we know that we're contributing a lot to the benefits and this I think is one place that we really can take some money out because we're very high, I asked Chris for the amount today and it was very, very high. And I think your email or you pointed out to Chris, 400,000, I think that's a very solid, solid amount. I think we've been paying, I think some years the town pay more and we pay more in the benefit.
Okay, that's the one where frankly, I think we ought to actually have the analysis that I asked for.
He didn't have it ready.
Oh, no, I know, I know, he said he'd have, he'd get it for us, not for tonight, but I would hope before next week. And use that as a basis for deciding exactly how much should be put in the, in those funds.
Based on the preliminary that I took a look with him, he doesn't have the final numbers ready, but based on the preliminary that I took, I think that's an area that we don't have to put in as much as before into the benefit because I think we've been putting in over years more than what we should have put in. So we have put in a large amount of money in that benefits package. So I think we're very safe by, can decrease in benefit by 200,000. Very, very safe.
But until we see the final numbers, it's going to be hard for some of us to swallow that.
The thing that's difficult here is that we're talking about, this is a.
The joint.
A joint account, the, both the health benefits and the workers' compensation.
Yes.
Are joint benefits with the town.
Right.
So the question is, the question is not only how much should get paid in, but how much should be paid in by the Board of Education versus the town's budget? And we have not had a good handle on that in the past and historically, I think the board's budget has been charged more than they should have.
A little more, yeah.
For the health, but perhaps less than they should have for the workers' compensation. So I think we should know how much is needed and then it's basically negotiation with the town manager and whose budget this, or with the Board of Finance because it's going to be in either our budget or their budget or split some way.
So this is one of the issues, we have a direct to find that is both, but I think once we look at the numbers today, the number that he showed me over at 400,000, I think we're safe, I know that we're safe with 200,000 out of it. I am positive that we're safe with that.
Well, that's good.
Okay, so that bring us from 3.9 to 3.5 and that's scenario six. And now we go into scenario seven.
So before we jump to seven, does anybody have any questions on, any more questions or comments on that? Does everybody understand what we're talking about?
Benefits.
We're talking about the benefits?
Those are, those are benefits.
We're self-insured.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right. We're self-insured and we have our workers' comp benefits and our health and benefits for all the municipal and Board of Ed employees. And so we have to put money into a pot and keep it a healthy level in order to be able to pay claims.
Self-insure is a little bit of a misnomer because there actually is an insurance policy, but.
How are you able to decrease it? Because you combined it.
Well, because, the question that we've asked Christian Johnson to give us an answer to is what is the healthy, what is the healthy amount that that pool needs to be at? And then as Murphy was saying, we need to also figure out if it's at the appropriate level, is the town and the Board of Ed putting money in at the appropriate levels relative to the size of the employee pools that they're insuring through that? Okay, so, so there's been some question about whether or not we have the most up-to-date information on all that and we're trying to get that.
In the past years, the district has contributed a large share into the pool.
We have a lot more employees.
Yeah, we have a lot more employees and we can, we have more people that go on the workers' comp than, but we have contributed a large share into the pool. But I think, although, I think the pool is safe, I will make sure Chris bring you the number, but the number that he showed me, he didn't give me the full paper, I think we're very safe with 200,000. I won't go beyond that. And then we go to scenario seven. And this is, we decreased two building substitute. This year we have building substitute in all the buildings. Some of them have used it, some of them have not been able to use them. So we are looking at decreasing to building substitute. One of the things I have done is to take 1.5 teachers out of Alliance, 1.5 secretaries out of Alliance and put it back in the general fund budget because one of the things that Alliance wants us to do, one of the things that Alliance, the state wants us to do is to start moving salaries out of Alliance into the general fund. So I start by doing that. However, in order to make the budget that cut, I went back and put those, that secretary in a house into Alliance. So previously, when I developed the budget, I took 1.5 secretaries out of Alliance.
The state's trying to have it both ways. If they're reducing the amount of money that they're giving us, I mean, I, Mrs. Lambert has made the point before about the problem with having staff on grant money. Alliance or any other kind, is if the grant disappears, then what happens to the employees? So, so yes, it's better to have them on general fund because then they're, then those positions are secure. On the other hand, Alliance funding is not supposed to disappear unless we suddenly get out of the bottom 33 school districts. But the state is cutting, if the state is cutting us, if they're reducing us and then they ask us to take on more of a cost burden, that's a little.
Well, they have not cut their Alliance grant, they have cut other things, but our Alliance grant has remained intact.
Yeah, that may be true, but in the end, a cut is a cut.
Well, well, it's not an increase, so an increase can, is a cut, but they have not cut us on the Alliance. And I think with the new formula that is, that if the past, the new formula, we will be on the list of what they call the winners, there's a list of the losers and the winners, I don't like that term, but we will be on the list of the winners.
So far, it's looking, it's looking like Wyndham is going to be.
Yeah, we're not going to get what Hartford is going to get, but, you know, but that first it has to happen. So this is how we arrived to 3.19 with scenario seven. So I will just leave it there if there's any question from you guys and from the board. And again, this is presented to you, suggestions from you, question and suggestion. Like I said, transportation, there already is a suggestion to put that 200,000 back and find that 200,000 somewhere else and we could look into that. So any other suggestion? We try to stay away from the classroom as much as possible. So as you see here, I'm not cutting teachers, there's no cut for teachers because that's the approach that we started, as far away as the classroom as possible.
Okay, so my.
Murphy and then Melissa.
My question is, what is really the implication of cutting building substitutes?
Right.
You know, does that mean that we'd end up paying money to Kelly, Kelly to fill substitute? Which is, the reason we put building substitutes in the first place is it was costing us more to hire Kelly services than it was to employ the substitutes.
So there are two buildings that have not made good use of the substitute, the buildings of, and so in those building, we did not see a decrease whatsoever in Kelly services. So that's one of the decisions. We're not cutting this district wide, but there are two buildings, buildings that really did not make, make good use of the building sub.
Go ahead.
What, can I ask what building?
That's what I was going to say, which two buildings?
I mean, it's only fair to, I feel like the taxpayers to know that people are not using the resources appropriately, so.
One is Nurt Wyndham, and I can't remember exactly what's the other one, but one is Nurt Wyndham.
Well, I guess my question is.
They didn't use their substituting.
But they're not using the building substitutes, but they are hiring Kelly services?
Well, so let me put it this way, the substitutes were not used appropriately, therefore we did not see a decrease in the amount of money paid to Kelly services by that building.
Did they have an increase in teacher absenteeism? Because that would correlate.
So I need you to trust me when I say the substitute were not used appropriately. I don't know how else to explain it. The substitute were hired to be in classroom substituting, right? For teachers that went out. So my statement is they were not used appropriately, they were not used for the purpose intended. I don't know how else to say. Meaning that they were not in classroom, covering classes.
Okay, except, I guess my thought is.
Not entire district, I want to make sure.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think what we have is a management issue and a question whether footsman with the budget is the, is a better approach than to require that the substitutes be used for what they're.
Right, intended for.
Yeah, for what they're intended for and that the building be managed according to, I mean, if you need to take out the 80,000, take it out of the building's budget, 40,000 out of each building and let them figure that out, you know.
What about in maintenance? Can we take something out of maintenance? How are we in the maintenance?
Well, and this year when we're building temporary offices for BOE and moving.
We need money, I mean, we just want an extra some more money.
And, you know, moving to the middle school for the early childhood and stuff, I'm not sure maintenance can take too much of it.
Yeah, and we just extra more money.
The construction pieces come, is this?
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah.
The construction pieces come out of the capital budget, so we ask for additional appropriations to, for the move for Kramer and for the middle school, but it wouldn't come out of maintenance. Maintenance is pretty tight. Wayne gives us a building by building, line item budget for each. We could take another look.
Yeah, we could.
And make some suggestions. It's fairly tight.
We go back.
Well, I mean, we're talking about $80,000. I think, I think what we should do is get a sense from the board and the discussion about sort of what the percentage, you know, of these, of the scenarios, what ones, you know, because we've already started talking before you came in about making some changes. And I think the point that some people are making, if I understand you correctly, is that why not require those two buildings to use their building substitutes appropriately and say?
Stop hiring Kelly services.
We could, we could get this out of, out of the buildings. We could get the 80,000, 40 and 40, we could get this out. This is not an issue, Chris.
Because I would think it would be better for the students to have a substitute that's in the building and knows the building than it is to have a Kelly substitute come in.
Okay, also a concern is if they're using the substitutes for something else, is it Also, a concern is, is if they're using the substitutes for something else, is it a need area that's not being filled that, that we have to allocate money for? I'm not questioning you.
No, I am telling you no. And you need to trust me in this one. I don't want to get in public explaining the details, but you need to trust me in this one. The answer is no.
It starts to tread on a personal issue.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, budget-wise, if there was a vacancy and something that wasn't being filled, and this is what they're filling it.
The answer is no. And I don't want to get into personal matters.
Well, then that is a leadership and a management issue, and that's something you need to take care of. But saying we're not going to give them a building sub because it hasn't been utilized is just going to kill us on Kelly services in the end because they're going to end up going over if that's what they're utilizing it for, so it's the direction of it.
Something I want to talk to Julie later on about this analysis, but later on to talk to her about this, about the Kelly services analysis. But that's not an issue. We could put that eighty thousand back.
I think you're hearing some resistance from us, even though we're not voting on anything tonight.
Well, and that's the purpose of it. So, you know, finally, you have to prove the budget. I propose a budget to you that you have to prove. So you have to be comfortable with what, once is the superintendent proposed budget, and then it goes to the board, and then it becomes the board budget.
Right.
Okay, so you have to be comfortable with what we are proposing. So this is your opportunity to ask those questions and give your feedback, because you have to support the budget.
Right. Are there other questions? I thought you had...
No, I was going to ask the same thing about building subs, so...
Well, now that we have Mr. Johnson here, are there any questions that we want to go back and revisit?
Well, I did, if I understood your email correctly, when I asked about where we would get money to cover the, if we took five hundred thousand dollars out of the transportation, then we have to, we, the last several years, we've paid for overages in the transportation budget, I think, by, by finding money in the certified teaching line. Is that, is that where most of it's been coming from?
That's correct, Dr. Sewell. We do end up at the end of the year finding between two and three, four hundred thousand dollars in salary savings attributable to vacancies, turnover, having some additional grant funds left over that we have to expend before six thirty. So we are able to shift some payroll over to grants. And, you know, so it's, there are some savings there. I've tried to make us less dependent on that because, you know, Dr. Garcia feels it's sort of a little bit of a crapshoot as far as will those savings be there every year? So I've been trying to wean us off of that approach and get us back to, you know, a hundred percent capacity. But there, we could be more realistic and employ some turnover factor.
Like a percentage.
A percentage, again, you know, a larger percentage. So a couple of years back, I used some pretty large turnover or vacancy factors. Now, I've brought those back over the last couple of years. I can put some back and see if we can cover transportation more adequately, not fully, maybe.
I guess, my, my, my interest is in having a budget line for transportation that reflects what we're really going to have to spend.
So that we're not making transfers.
And, and, and being straightforward with the board of finance and the taxpayers about the fact that realistically, we're never going to have a hundred percent of the teaching staff onboard a hundred percent of the time. There's, there's going to be some leakage there, turnover and the other things you just mentioned. The question is, how much is that likely to be? The superintendent is making the best efforts she can to tighten that up so that we don't have vacancies particularly at the beginning of the school year, and that when we do have vacancies, there are students that need to be taught. So we, we try and find replacements as much as possible so that we actually do the mission. But realistically, we're not going to be at a hundred percent. And so when we go to the board of finance, we shouldn't ask the taxpayers to fund a hundred percent when we're never really going to quite get there. So if we put the money in the transportation budget, we need to take money out of other places where, you know, the question is how much?
Well, my approach has been sort of to ramp it up over the years, to adjust it slowly, like with special ed, increase as much as I can each year to get special ed where it needs to be, to get transportation where it needs to be. I find you can't do it all in one year sometimes, but over several years. So if I put two hundred thousand, wouldn't break the bank in putting in some more turnover. So if you want to make that more realistic, I can, but you won't see then the contractual percentages be at what you think they should be. For instance, administrators two point one, certified at two point five, one, you know, those will change slightly just because I'm putting in some more turnover, but it can be done, no problem.
Why, Chris, why would those change? Because if we look at salary, we budget average, and if we go back to budgeting actual, I think we have a lower number. So I think we could get the two hundred thousand out of salary because we budget average, and if we, we don't budget actual, so.
So yes, so the simple answer is yes. We can increase transportation two hundred and take it out of salary lines. Since we have, I'd say just under twenty million in salaries, you know, a hundred thousand, it's, two hundred thousand is not going to make a big impact.
What I'm looking for is a relatively painless way of getting the increase in the general fund budget that we have to ask the taxpayers for down to a number that's as low as we can reasonably live with. Yeah, I, I don't want to go to the board of finance and ask for five percent when we can really live with three and then have the board of finance figure out that they cut the budget two percent. I'd rather that we get to a place where we actually go to the board of finance with a believable budget that they're willing to support as we gave it to them, that we can take to the town voters and have people believe it and pass the thing at referendum and then, and then do the job, right? Rather than have this game back and forth where people try to find, you know, the button that's hidden in the budget somewhere. You chaired the board of finance once upon a time.
As the chair of the board of finance, I can say you can, I think that's laudable, but, but the fact of the matter is, some people still like to play the game even, even if you put the most presentable budget before them. So, you know, we can do our best.
And as I said before, we haven't made cuts in certified staff, so we haven't cut teachers. And I think it's a budget we can live with. I know we can go back and cut the money for transportation and the two sub. That's easy to go back in the budget.
The other thing that we talked about before you came in was the, the technology.
Yes.
Because there's not really, doesn't seem that there'll be an option to get a big one-time, you know, bunch of money out of the undesignated fund balance this year.
Well, I'd like to, I have an idea about that piece because I've recently reviewed our capital line items for the board that have been already approved in past years. And there is some unspent technology that the town approved that if, it's, it's around over three hundred thousand dollars that's approved already, unspent. I would say we review that piece and see if that's not adequate for our upcoming years. It was part of a seventeen appropriation, capital appropriation.
So, so the, so the request would be to...
For the town to fund that piece.
Take that, that unspent money and dedicate it to the technology budget.
Is it the capital?
It's already, it's in the capital budget. It was approved for seventeen. They, they put it in as a reserve for capital improvement funding. The problem is, the town didn't supply the funding line for that, so...
So it's hanging out there.
So it's hanging out there, approved and unfunded. In other words, it's a capital budget that can be consumed, but the question is, how do we pay for it? And the town could either, there's a couple of different options. There's the unreserved fund balance. There's a transfer in from the town budget. There's potentially financing of some type. So I'm just putting that out there.
Was it for town technology or was it for board of ed technology?
Board technology, board technology. A resolution would need to be passed if we were to finance it through...
How much, how much did you say was that amount?
It's a little bit over three hundred thousand.
But we asked him for six fifty-six, so that was still put us for other three hundred thousand.
It would be a compromise. I mean, it would be a way to get some technology, not everything we'd want, but it's already approved. It would just need to be financed.
That's, that's the tricky part. This is, so it's in, it's in, it's in the capital fund budget, but it, but it's unfunded at this point.
Correct, Dr. Sewell.
So, and if I understand the document that you emailed the town, the town manager yesterday, we're not going to find that money in the uncommitted fund balance.
Look, I mean, I think a discussion is worthwhile.
Discussion with the board of finance.
Board of finance. I mean, I really think they would, it's not at the size, it's not at the level it's been in the past. I think, you know, so a discussion with Mr. White and the chairman and...
And Mr. Rivers would be helpful.
It might be worth, before we go do our budget presentation to the board of finance, to have that discussion with, with Tom White and Jim Rivers and see what there's some openness to any of that.
So Jim Rivers is meeting with us next week, with Chris and I, about the budget? So we could put that out there for him, because if that money is there and they approve it, we're still looking for three hundred thousand more for two nineteen, two eighteen, nineteen for technology. Because you take a look, we did take technology out completely. We took it out and then we put a hundred and sixty thousand dollars back in, right, Chris? We took it out.
This scenario says we take, we put back a piece of it, right?
But then we took it back out again. We took it back out again.
Oh, yeah, we, exactly. There was, it's a sort of in and out.
It's in and out. You took it out again.
I don't think, I, I don't think some of us feel that we should be taking...
Zero is adequate.
Was it originally designated for something?
Sure. Originally, Brendan had over six hundred thousand. And what we said is, I think board members were saying, let's put some, let's put all of it back.
No, no, she's talking about the three hundred thousand.
Was the three hundred thousand originally designated for...
We would ask the board, we would ask the town for that piece, the funding.
Right, but what did we originally ask for the three hundred thousand for? Was it laptops? Was it smart boards? Was it running cable? Was it...
Hold on.
Does Brendan know?
Brendan, you know what it's about?
Originally it was for elementary smart boards. I decided it was never extended because it was never funded up there.
Do we still need elementary smart boards?
Oh, yeah, we do. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so then that isn't money that should be going to our one-on-one initiative with the laptops that should be making sure that all our elementary schools have their smart boards they need.
So, so the one-two-one initiative, we put it in the six hundred thousand. I mean, some schools have their, their smart board, like Nachoak has theirs.
So you're not going to...
Not a hundred percent. What school, what other school was, I mean, Nachoak's...
The four elementary schools have had a one hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah.
So the hundred and sixty was a server refresh, twenty thousand of a hardware upgrade, and then forty thousand of an AV, audiovisual upgrade for forty. That was the one sixty that we have in and out.
In and out.
And then the, the four ninety-six, which was the bulk of it, was one-to-one rollouts and equipment refreshes.
Right.
So that was the original request, was a combination of the hundred and sixty and the four ninety-six. We broke it up into two pieces, saying the larger part we'd request from the town, the hundred and sixty we'd keep on our budget. But then to lower the percentage increases, we took the entire amount out.
The numbers that you just referred to are a little different than the technology that's in our packet, but...
No, because the number that he's referring to is the total six hundred and fifty-six thousand for technology. Okay, that include the hundred and sixty that we just took out, plus the other four hundred and something thousand.
Okay, so can, since you sent us this budget book last Friday, and it has a...
What page are you on this?
On page twenty-three. That's, this is basically the summary proposed budget that comes out with a proposed general fund budget of a little more than forty-nine million dollars. That does not have any of the technology in it, or that was one question I didn't get quite figured out.
It has a hundred and sixty thousand worth of tech.
So a hundred and sixty thousand is in here, and that means that...
And the remainder would be a request to the town, a new request to the town.
So four hundred and fifty-six thou, four hundred and, no, a hundred and sixty, four, six hundred and fifty-six minus a hundred and sixty?
It's five ten.
It's five hundred and whatever that is.
No, I'm sorry.
No, four hundred and...
Ninety.
Four hundred, well, four hundred and ninety-four?
Four hundred and ninety. Five fifty-six minus one sixty. Fifty minus six is nine.
Yes, there were two pieces to his request. One of the pieces, the one sixty we kept, and then offered it up again.
The four ninety.
Okay, so, so there's, there's about, what, a little less than five hundred thousand dollars in technology that's not in that request that's built into here.
That's what we were hoping to ask for the town for.
Okay, so that's what you want to try and, all right.
And then you asked me to look into the fund balance, so then I did that piece.
I, I think I agree with Mrs. Lambert that the three hundred thousand dollars that hasn't been funded, if we can find funds for it, should go for what it was intended for in the first place. Okay, so if we don't have the four hundred and some, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we didn't put in here, then that basically throws a monkey wrench into what, the one-on-one initiative?
Part of it. Yeah, yeah.
One-on-one, yeah, four ninety-six, eight one five is the one-to-one rollouts from the town and a equipment refresh.
So, so I'm wondering, technology is like a lot of other things. You know, you don't necessarily have to spend it all at once. You can do a rollout, and sometimes if you do a rollout over time, you can save some money. So what, and we've got a number of moving parts here. You've got the, the smart boards, the one-on-one initiative, the server refresh. So I think what I'd like to see at some point is a tech plan that tries to figure out how to spread this stuff out over as much time as possible in order to cut down the amount of money that you have to have at any particular point in the budget.
This is a rollout, Cam, and I do have that information, which is under the superintendent's.
Yeah, but if there's a way we can squeeze some of the budget without torpedoing the program, that's the...
Well, it's a rollout. It's what, every, two classrooms get the technology every year.
Yeah.
So this year it was six and nine, and next year it'll be seven and ten. So it's a rollout. We're not giving the whole district electronic devices all at once. It's a rollout, and it's trying to do it as equitably as possible. And at some point, we're going to have to start replacing those first-year ones, so it's going to be a constant budget item. So in my opinion, putting this into special funds or capital improvement or wherever we're thinking about asking for it is a disservice to this program because we know that the special funds, special ballot, whatever that is called, that extra fund that we have...
The capital improvement or reserve for capital.
The reserve fund has been healthy, but if we continue to pull six hundred thousand dollars from it every year, one, it's a PR nightmare for this board because not only did we approve your blah 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 budget, but we gave you extra money, and we gave it to you last year. How many years do you need it? But it can't continue this program.
Yes, forever.
It can't continue this program for perpetuity. This is part of our operating budget. And I understand getting the percentage down. I'm not, I've done this for nine years now. I'm not ignorant to that process. But either we put it as part of our, in my opinion, we put it as part of our operating budget, or we don't call it a new initiative. We call it something we're attempting to do or something like that. Thank you.
So I have a question for Brendan.
Well, well, Melissa has her hand up.
My only, I would love to see every kid have a laptop, but I think that there are other areas in this budget that we could potentially cut. But maybe not every fourth grader gets a laptop. Maybe fourth grade isn't one-to-one. Like, what's preventing us from just getting a few carts, laptop carts, and then they have to share them amongst themselves? Just so that they're getting exposure to Google Classroom, whatever they're going to do with the Chromebooks, which would have to be...
Fourth graders are not one-to-one next year.
Thought I read that in there.
No, no, it's six and seven, nine and ten.
Five and four as well.
Yeah. You have five and four?
It's fifth and four in there, too. Four is probably were one-to-one with ed.
But I did not put five and four in the plan, so who put five and four in the plan?
We discussed that.
Okay, but we're getting a suggestion on a creative option here.
Right, so at least they are getting some exposure to it.
They're getting exposure and getting to use it, right?
Right, but it's not necessarily one-to-one. And fourth grade, I think, one-to-one is a little, a little young, maybe.
I don't remember what fourth grade. It's always middle and high school.
Okay, then you had, you had a question that you wanted to ask, and then...
So that might change your number.
Yeah, definitely, definitely change your number.
If it's not one-to-one and grades four and five, your number's going to change significantly.
Because we pulled the initiative at middle and high school. We never put, we never set the initiative with elementary. So I know that elementary has to change because of the I-Ready test, and so that's why you were trying to put Chromebooks in the classroom because the I-Ready, they need new ones in the I-Ready, but we don't need to give ours to this child on the cart. For a district this size, or a district this size, I was looking at different budgets over the, over the years. Is it normal to spend about nine hundred to a million dollars in technology every year? Is it normal to spend about 900 to a million dollars in technology every year for a district this size?
I'd have to look at other districts, but it works out to about, you know, 500 to 600,000 each year.
Yeah, so.
Especially districts doing one-to-one, I would imagine it would be higher.
Plus, we've never really upgraded servers to a large extent unless we've, like Barrows has a new server, the high school has a horrible system here, at which we've discussed, you know, at length when we were trying to get the high school referendum passed and stuff like that. So it's not just the actual hard technology, it's the wiring and the Wi-Fi and all of that stuff that has to be upgraded as he, I'm sure, as he purchases these new systems, because if we have just so many right now and the server goes down every afternoon at the high school, when you add another 100, 200, 300 over time, the server's going to go down before school starts, so.
So I was reading that in districts this size, it's very normal to budget 900 to a million dollars per year in technology, to include all software, hardware, and that is very common, common.
So we'll try to, it would be very helpful for talking to the town about our request to have it couched in light of what other like, like communities with budgets our size are. Okay?
Okay, so, a couple of things. One is, when I've talked about spreading it out, I didn't mean, I meant you can, ideally everyone that's getting a Chromebook gets it on the first class in September, but for budget purposes, sometimes you don't give it to everybody on the first of September, you spread it out, and sometimes just the training and the, and getting everything in place make, it sometimes makes more sense. I don't, that's why, I'd like to see a tech plan. The other thing is, the technology, as soon as you start using the Chromebooks and the Google Classroom for education, it would seem to me that, you know, we didn't add time to the, to the day. Something has to, that used to be there has to disappear that's getting replaced by this. So, and the obvious thing is physical textbooks.
No, no, no.
Your teachers are-
I can, I can speak to that, just because I use Google Classroom all day, every day. If anything, it saves me time, especially with, like correcting, my students can type faster than they can write, they can practice the typing that they have to do on S Back, so I don't really feel like I'm missing it, anything.
How much of the content, though, ends up digital as opposed to physical textbook? I'm not talking about taking out of the teaching budget, I'm talking about taking out of the textbook budget.
I mean, that all depends, like some of our, where I teach, our textbooks are online. My textbook, I still have like a hard copy of a textbook, so we still reference that, but all of the work that they do, I guess, is through the classroom.
So the number of student textbooks should decline as, as the content that they need goes more and more digital.
I would imagine if we opted to buy, yeah, if it's one-to-one, we probably would do that.
I mean, I'm not quite, quite certain what's going on at K to 12, but I know that in higher education, you know, students are, there are law schools now that say, welcome to law school, they hand you a laptop, every textbook you will need for the entire law school's already on that laptop they just handed you. You don't go to the bookstore and buy a single, a single physical book.
Right, but they charge you an arm and a leg for that laptop, because there's still a cost to access these websites and stuff like that.
They do, but, but, and the publishers still make their profits, but the publishers aren't publishing physical textbooks, so what you pay for is on those computers is less than what you pay for a physical textbook.
But, but you have to pay for the subscription of the book online, so how do you get the computer, the micro, the Chromebook? You do have to pay for the subscription of the book.
You do, you do have to pay something, but it should cost you less than the physical books. There should be a way to reduce the-
But I think we redid that in this budget.
There should be a way to get some of this tech, some of the money for the technology out of the textbook lines, is what I'm saying.
I think we reduced-
So I think in the long run, once we're fully implemented and able to sustain it, yes, but until then, until everybody has a Chromebook, until everybody can access this online, and a lot of them can't at home, we still need to have those physical textbooks and keep them as up to date as possible. I don't disagree with you, Dr. Sewell, is what I'm trying to say. I understand where you're going with this, but until we get there, and if it's not in our operating budget, it's not a promise every year, we have to make sure we have what the students need to be able to operate from year to year.
That's, that's got to be part of the whole plan.
Well, I think one of the things that this conversation has pointed to is, is the need for us board members to understand what the tech plan is, because then it's easier for us to be behind it and, and advocate for what we need from the town, and also to ask questions. So that would be very helpful to, to see what we have at this point, even if it's not perfect. Does that make sense to folks?
Because I'm, I'm curious to, because I haven't been to all the elementary schools, what do kids have there for technology, or do they have a computer lab, or, I don't know what they have in elementary schools.
Some have a computer lab because of space, like Wyndham has a computer lab in the library. Some have carts to go from classroom to classroom. Yeah, those are spent in space.
Okay.
So Nachoak, I think, have a computer lab also.
So could that be part of the tech plan, maybe?
Yeah. Nachoak have a computer lab, I don't know if Wyndham has, Wyndham Center has a computer lab.
Wyndham Center is the only elementary without a lab.
Without a lab.
And they all have two, between two and four carts.
Carts, yeah, they use the carts.
Way of laptops already?
Right, and each classroom has between six and 10 laptops.
No, I do know that the teacher laptop need to be replaced, the teachers, I, those before coming to this meeting, I have the teach advisory group, and one of the things the teachers are requesting is that their laptop that they currently have with I-Rate, they can't use, we bought them the smart board, but we didn't replace the laptop, so now they can't use the smart board because they're so old, and so-
So that's the 125,000 that you have in this budget?
So that's why we need to replace.
For that refresh.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a very important tool for the teachers.
Yeah, yeah. So we bought them the smart board, but we didn't replace the laptops, and so now they can't access the smart board with old laptops.
Different topic. Okay, so are we done with the technology topic for now?
Yes.
There's a question that's not related to that coming up, but anybody else wanted to say anything more about that? Okay, you're on.
All right, so I'm just seeing this tonight for the first time, so I didn't have this question, I haven't had time to comprehensively go through the budget on this one topic, but here it says cost drivers continued, I don't know, I'm near the beginning of the, I'm on page three, if you count the cover pages of the page. Cost drivers continues, three bilingual teachers. Where are we planning on placing those?
Nachoak, Sweeney, and Wyndham Center.
Okay, well, total elementary line item bilingual instruction, instruction, comp and garros, which would probably be corrected as a typo, because it shows up everywhere on this.
What page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page 32 in the budget book. Has a decrease for elementary, total elementary bilingual of 26,035. So that's going down there. The only school that I saw that bilingual went down was Barrows, and I don't know what the reason for that was there, and that's a programming thing, I trust that you have that under control, but I'm wondering why we're putting the elementaries down, but we say we're adding 256, 230 to the bilingual education in the elementary level.
I didn't hear a question. The other bilingual teachers, what you said, Barrows?
Barrows has a decrease in their bilingual line item.
It could be because of their numbers, maybe their numbers are decreasing there.
Right, but if, I'm on page 32, ESL slash bilingual instruction slash comp and garros.
32.
It says certified personnel.
This is the page, this one, 18, 19 elementary schools program detail.
Right, the second table from the bottom has a decrease of 26,035 for bilingual instruction and garros. Right, but this says we're adding three bilingual teachers, and Dr. Garcia just said it was at the elementary level for 256, 230. So how is one going down and one significantly going up?
Okay, so, so, I can't find my page.
Well, you just look at this one.
I have your link book in here.
Let's need some more.
Bilingual, bilingual certified. Bilingual. And where you said bilingual, compañeros and bilingual are two different things.
Well, it says ESL slash bilingual dash instruction compañeros. I didn't see a separate bilingual line on the entry.
Yep.
I assumed that was comprehensive for bilingual and compañeros.
I don't see that in my, what page is it, 32?
32, it's right there.
I see, I see, oh, ESL bilingual instruction compañeros, right, certified personnel.
Second table from the bottom, right. It has a decrease of 26,000, which I'm assuming it's not a huge number, but it goes to our balancing the budget and coming out the number we want. If we're then increasing it by 256,000, that's not a decrease of 26,000.
You're totally right, we're increasing three compañeros, not compañeros, three bilingual teachers, one of three schools, however, due to retirement in some schools, it's only what should be a wash of one teacher added to the budget, added to the total budget. So maybe we put it in the wrong line, so there are three teacher retirements that are taking place in Sweeney, Nachoak, and I forgot, whatever, some other place. So there are three teachers that will be, four teachers will be leaving, so it's only, we only added one teacher salary-wise, but it should be reflected differently, you're totally right.
Well, then it shouldn't go up, are we paying one bilingual teacher 256,000, because the paper that you gave us tonight has us going up 256,000?
Well, for three bilingual teachers, it's 356,000.
But they're not new cost drivers, then, they're replacements.
Not only them are new cost drivers, correct.
Okay, so-
So Chris, we need to reflect that differently.
So, okay, just to be clear, because what we're, what the, the budget workshop from January 31st is the first part of this packet, right?
Okay.
So the cost drivers and the things that are assumed in this presentation that was given on January 31st, do they all carry over in the scenarios that you're presenting us tonight at the second budget workshop? That's all.
Right, I, I understand that, I'm just, I was-
Sometimes, sometimes we do have, like Dr. Garcia said, she might be backfilling people that are leaving, but we do have, it's not always clear with compañeros versus bilingual versus ESL, if I'm classifying it properly from the budget work-
Okay, well, you just say new staffing requests.
Budget worksheets, but I see there's a discrepancy, so I, 100%.
It says new staffing requests, so I just didn't understand why one line had us going down, not by a lot, but by a little bit, and all these little things add up over time, and the other one has us going up by a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, so, but what you didn't do is, you put the bilingual, we put the bilingual increase of three bilingual teachers in the, over here, but we didn't put that increase-
The offset piece on another sheet.
Teachers increase, right.
Okay, so, good catch. Need to have that fixed.
I have a question on that same page.
Okay. Same page. On this, this one?
Yes, sorry.
On the cost drivers?
Yeah, on the cost drivers one, it says one special education teacher.
Yeah.
And then the back of the budget book on page 127, it says a special education head teacher district-wide, is that the same position?
I don't know why my book is different than pages like you, 127?
Yeah, 127, it says changes for 2018, 2019 school year.
It's one new special education teacher, yes.
So that would be more of like a, kind of like a central office position, because they would be district-wide?
They're going to, they're going to the schools.
They can go around to the schools.
Well, it says for North Wyndham School here, and then a special ed head teacher district-wide.
That's what I'm, right, yeah.
So there's, there's two positions listed on page 127 under changes for the 2018-19 school year, very near the top.
They're looking at the narrative, they're looking at the narrative.
I'm looking at the narrative.
Yeah, so on 127, for your-
123.
I'm sorry, we're sharing-
The second, the second one is realigning, Elizabeth, is repurposing and, and I gather realigning an existing vacancy is repurposing the vacancy.
Yeah, exactly, so the additional, there's only one additional position. The other one is realigning, so it's a position there is special education head teacher district-wide, realignment of existing vacancies, so there's a vacancy there, there's a vacancy that he's realigning. So it's already in the budget, there's a vacancy, it was already in the budget.
It's a teaching vacancy that wasn't, wasn't assigned to-
So like, I guess maybe what I'm confused about is, what exactly is this head teacher going to do? Are they going to go around to the schools, make sure that we're running PPTs correctly and all that sort of thing, or, you know, writing IEPs correctly? So if that's what they're going to do, I guess, I'm thinking that that's already what the assistant director of pupil services should be doing.
So, so you could, could be yes and could be no, because of the amount of special education students that we have is not sufficient. Suzanne worked with all the elementary school, and Miguel worked with the middle and high school. So you're totally right, in a district that has a lower percentage of special education, this could work, but the workload is so high that between both of them, so this person will help them district-wide, help them with the PPT, attending some other PPT, I mean, they cannot make it to all the PPT meetings, there are so many of them. I mean, Harlowd is, I mean, I cannot believe how much these people work. On the weekend, she's doing all the PPT, because Monday through Friday, she's in meetings all day, and so Monday and Fridays when they're doing their, their work. So this position is really needed to support them with the PPTs.
Does that answer your question?
That does, yeah, I just wanted to know what that position was.
Wonderful, no, it's a good catch. Any other questions that people have?
So, yeah, I, Mrs. Lambert just reminded me of one. We had talked earlier about the tuition at Barrows.
Yes.
As far as I know, there's nothing in the budget.
No, no, nothing yet, but I plan to do it. They have to May 1st to send out the letter to the parents.
Well, yeah, but-
Got to reflect it in our budget.
The thing is, is that we, we need to make it, we need, we need to think about that.
It's not much, it's not about 18,000.
All right, Chris? Was that what you said?
Whatever you decide the tuition increase should be, I think it was 4,600 is the current, so depending on what level.
We don't, we don't want it to be more than 100 for students.
Oh, no.
Why, we're losing more than 100 percent.
No, 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 no.
We had talked about, we had had an initial discussion, very brief, not conclusive, about the board's desire to maybe be a little more aggressive than that.
So we could decide how much you guys want to increase, increase the-
There was, I think when we researched it, it was between zero and five percent.
Yeah, no, I remember seeing it in a packet, I remember reading it.
When we looked at the different tuition increases to ourselves from outside.
Well, we looked at, you sent us some data on the tuition that's being charged by-
By others, right.
And we're on the low side, as I recall.
Yes, we are. And by the way, I already have increased it last year, Nachoak said, but it hasn't been increased, so I increased it last year.
By how much?
$100 per student.
Well, that's-
It's not keeping up with the, the loss in magnet school funding that we've seen, so.
No, no problem, I'd be happy to increase it again, I mean, that's not, you know, but I increased it right at 100 per student, but that's not a problem, we can increase it again. I just have to make sure I meet the deadline to send it.
A 5% increase would be, if it's 4,600, 5% increase would be 230?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and there's what, 100, that's 180?
4,800.
180 tuition paying students, roughly?
Would be 200 per student.
230 or so, yeah.
Well, it's, it's nine grades at 20 a grade, right?
It's nine grade at 20.
So maybe 30K, something?
20 students, I mean, there's a couple of extra ones because of the staff preference thing, but it's roughly-
Nine, nine at 20.
It's, it's roughly 180 students.
At 200.
Times 230, right? That's 41,500, which is-
Okay. So, so-
It's close to a school bus.
Yes.
No, more than one school bus, you can do more than one school bus here.
So you're, so you're suggesting...
How much is the...
I think that, is there consensus among, we're not...
No, we hadn't decided on that, but that, I just took it...
That we should be looking at a higher, I know a couple people said that, but I'm interested in this side of the table, too.
Yeah.
Do you think we should increase the tuition?
Probably, no.
Well, here's my thing, we shouldn't balance the, the budget, or propose the budget, on the backs of the Wyndham students. I mean, our, our personal tuition for each of our kids goes up as the, as the grant goes down as well, but Wyndham shouldn't have to pay for the sending towns who aren't making up this difference. I don't want to be onerous and I don't want to, you know, hurt any other town, I don't, certainly don't want to hurt any other student anywhere learning, but we shouldn't be hurting Wyndham students because our, our grant money is going down, our magnet school grant funding has gone down, it's listed in the, the budget book and the handout, and suddenly we're, we're giving less to all students because other towns aren't picking up their fair share.
And magnet funding, we're not going to get that back, that will go down. Alliance will remain, but magnet funding will go down. How much you say was the, the 40, the students, a total, how much, Dr. Sue?
Five percent increase.
It's a five percent increase, it would be $41,400.
Okay. That's, that's a good amount, right?
And, well, five percent is, it's, there's a little bit of catch-up, but just looking through all of this, we're going to be challenged to ask the town for three percent increase. Because most of these numbers come out a little more than three percent. And I think if we want to do the things that we want to do with technology and elsewhere, we're not going to get below three percent. So we need to, we need to, we need, if we're going to keep up with, as Mrs. Lambert says, with the students coming from other towns, paying at the same rate as the students from this town, we need, we need to be charging at least the same three percent that we're going to be asking the local taxpayers to pick up. And we're a little behind from where we should have been anyway, so I think five percent is reasonable. And, and maybe more than five percent is reasonable, but five percent certainly seems reasonable.
In one, in one year?
Yeah, well, yeah, we don't need to hit them, you know, 42 percent in one year, exactly.
We don't need to do the whole catch-up every year, but we need to, we need to start thinking about catching this up.
So what we could do is send them a letter right now, telling them that Wyndham Public School, you know, is considering to raise their tuition, so that they're warned, this is February, right? And then when they get the letter...
Then we'd have to take an action at one of our next board meetings.
Yeah, so we bring a proposal to increase the tuition.
I think that's fair, because they're preparing their budgets, too, so if we're going to ask them for that, they, they're going to want to build it into their budget.
So we, I need to send them something where they know about it.
Again, it's, it's spread out over, the 41,000 would be spread out over 23 districts, so, you know, the pain is not as great as it would be.
Here, I found it in a February 9th email from Ms. Testa, ACT increased 17.44 percent, and...
In one year?
Right.
Yeah.
I remember that now.
Yeah, QMC increased 16.67 percent, according to the email. So, a hundred dollar increase is not doing our district the service that we should be doing.
Okay, so let's, let's agree that you'll come back to us with, for us to take action at a future board meeting on...
Five percent?
On a five percent increase.
Okay, that would be at our next business meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it could be March 7th, or whatever.
I guess it's the 7th.
Yeah, March 7th. Any further issues up for discussion tonight?
I have a, two other questions.
Okay.
So this one just stuck out to me, because I was at the Board of Finance meeting, I think last year, or one of the board members, I'm on page 30, was quite upset with the $190,000 that's budgeted for travel. So, what exactly do we spend that $190,000 in travel on?
Right here.
Uh, 580.
580.
Well, we're going to reduce it by 180.
I have to give you some backdrop on it.
It's not like the superintendent of Mansfield?
Oh, no, 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 no!
I have to, to be honest, it doesn't, right away...
This is, this is entire mileage reimbursement, this entire travel for the entire district, mileage reimbursement and everything is in there. So Chris, why you don't get that out, the superintendent? No, 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 no.
I'm just joking.
Well, we should have a breakdown of where it goes to, because last year you said that we were going to do less international recruiting and stuff like that. So if that's happening, then that number should come down, but, it's not huge, but it should still come down if we're not doing the international recruiting that we have then.
So Chris, just get the breakdown of what that is, totally.
And did we do any international recruiting this year?
No, not this year, for me for coming here, we haven't.
Okay.
So then we didn't allocate that whole 190 for that?
Towards travel.
We did, last year we did, did some international recruiting, but this year we have not, put it in the budget.
So that should be a surplus area?
Right, that's what I'm thinking, but it's only a surplus of...
But let me wait till Chris gives us exactly what he has in the $190,000.
Because this is schools, so...
Yeah, we, we need to look at the actual.
Yeah.
Figure out where, what's, what we're spending it on. That's a good, that's a good piece of memory.
Yes, well, it was very quite a... This one is one that sticked out last year, and I remember you guys saying, "H R, H R", so, "No, no, no, we haven't spent $190,000 on travel," right?
Well, there was an intention to go and do a recruiting trip, one recruiting trip.
Yeah, but it wouldn't cost...
Because $190,000...
No, no, but this is, this is, again, this is, this is schools.
I don't want to be in that trip.
Yeah, because on the previous page, line 580, on page 29, it has 190 for schools and then 33,3 for central, so, so we should know what that 33,3 went to, too. 190 in travel is still a good amount, but I know administrators drive around, they go to conferences, a little bit, not a lot, they go back and forth to central office and stuff like that. We should have a breakdown of about where that goes.
But 33, 33,000 for central office travel, I think is minimum, we can live with that, but you can get that. That's, that's, that's 33 for central office staff in a year, that's very, pretty, pretty good.
So what kind of mileage are we covering for the schools? Because I'm just thinking that someone from the public asks me, because I think that number...
51 percent was going to, 51, 51 cents?
But like, when, when are we paying somebody, covering someone's mileage?
So the principals or any, any staffing get...
Have to go to a conference.
They go to a conference, they have to go to another school, they have to go to a meeting. In our policy, it says very clear that the principals have to go to a meeting outside their building, they get their mileage.
Okay.
It's for the teachers that...
On the teachers?
That they might be assigned at the middle school and the high school, incident during their workday, or if they're itinerant, like a speech language pathologist might go to every school, or a number of schools in a day.
A social worker that has to go, psychologists here.
Specialists might go to different schools.
Good. I think I under, I get that, but I don't think some people in the public quite understand that. Some people have to travel around. My next question is on page 101, it's the middle school budget, and it said, under secretaries, that projected for, and Murphy, your question about secretaries is what alerted me to this, that projected for 2017-2018, the projection was four secretaries, but the actual this year is six. So I'm just curious where the additional two came from, especially when the previous year we had only four.
Charlie, can you explain that, why we have six?
I don't have a book in front of me, so...
Could you stall her book?
You can look at mine, darling.
What page is that?
101.
You can look at, here.
It's a middle school.
The middle? Yeah. The secretary, secretary. Um, yeah, there were temporary staff filling those positions. I, I know for, and for the, for the last year, we had a, we had a temp for those unfilled positions for personal leaves and things like that, so that, I know that that was a capital one of them, I'd have to look into what the other one was.
But the, somebody filling a spot should just fill one of the four vacancies, it shouldn't be two.
But if, but if it's an actual, it would have been, it might have been counted differently, so I'll have to look at that.
Actual versus temp, is that what you're saying?
So you didn't count the temp as an actual?
Yeah, I'll have to double check, but I, I think that that's what happened.
I, and I guess I'd maybe like a breakdown...
They have six secretary, the middle school?
And then if you...
One, two, three, four, five. They have six.
Yeah.
They actually have six.
Yeah.
You would, you would like a breakdown?
I mean, I, I don't ever want to cut anybody's job, but six secretaries at the middle school seems a little excessive to me.
I thought, because we're reducing, we were supposed to reduce that by one anyway.
Okay, so, so there's a plan to reduce a, a whole line of staffing from the middle school. Remember, the middle school have three academies, three houses. And so when you created the three houses, you put three secretaries in each house. You put three guidance counselor in three house. So those five here, you have three secretaries. Then you have one in guidance, that's four, one the principal secretary, that's five, and one in attendance. So you have six. So, so as we move, this is the first year that we're moving one of the academies. So this year, they're, they're only, there are only two academies in sixth grade. Next year, there would be two academies, sixth and seventh. And the following year, there would be two academies, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So you will be removing a whole line of administrator, secretary, guidance.
By what year would that be?
2020?
So, so next year would be 18, 19, so you're 19, 20.
19, 20.
So at one point, we will have a secretary, guidance counselor, and administrator administering to 200 students in year three?
So you'll have, you'll have two cities, you will have to have two administrators here.
Well, but no, in year three, when we still have eighth graders in the third city, then we will have one administrator for 200 students?
Well, I'll have to make a decision there, I'll have to make a decision there, yes. You're right, yeah. But the rationale why we didn't want to do it one shot is because the newcomers, the sixth graders, then get used to only two academies.
Right, yeah.
And then they move to seventh grade, instead of, they'll switch them from three academies to two academies.
Okay. I can understand the phasing out, but I don't want to get to a point where we're paying for a guidance counselor, administrator, and a secretary for 200 or so students, because there's about 600 kids at the middle school right now. So every time we move a grade over to one of the other two houses, they have less responsibility.
So we look in at, if there is an attrition, for example, then we don't replace an adult's position, but, but your cost is coming because there are three academies, or three houses, or whatever we want to call it.
That will change in a year.
Yeah. Well, you have one more, this year, and one more year for it to be going to the other approach, right? And by the way, I always said it from the time I came, and I believe Dr. Sue, having three academies at the middle school is very costly, very, very costly.
Yes, well, when we first started talking about this...
We got turnaround funds to help pay for this, and we did a turnaround line now.
Well, what got me started on this whole line of subject, industry's had this, this problem, but since they're under a different set of incentives, they've dealt with it more rapidly. As technology, as, as, as computer, network computers ended up on people's desks, the size of clerical staffs and companies has dropped substantially.
I understand that.
And, and, yeah, but it, it has taken time, you know, it wasn't like falling off the edge of a table, but it has. But, um, public service, not just education, but a lot of public have been, because their incentive structures are different, have been less rapid in reducing clerical staff as technology has taken over. And, and when you, when you start looking at places where you need to save money in the budget, you start saying, "Well, it's time that we got the savings that technology has, has produced in profit-making organizations by paring back on excess clerical staff," one way or another. And we're slow to do that, but we need to, we need to get it done. At one point, there was something like eight, eight secretarial or assemblies, you know, or clerical positions in the high school building.
Well, it's...
And, you know, more than, more than, more than can really be justified in the modern world. Now, that, your argument about having textbooks and electronics, same, same thing, but you need a plan that doesn't leave you there. Eventually, you gotta get rid of the, the old stuff.
I understand that, right. But we have to get to that point before we can eliminate, otherwise we're doing a disservice to the kids who can't access that.
You actually need a phase-in plan that tells you when you're getting rid of stuff and how you're moving stuff, rather than just saying, "Okay, some, somewhere down the road," because if you're, if you're going somewhere down the road, somewhere will always be down the road.
You need to have a plan.
Yes. I just want to piggyback a little bit, and it'll be a little bit different. I understand the need for cut costs and cut clerical, however, we are a very service-driven industry. We are not an insurance company that can respond to their, their constituents, their employees, their shareholders, whatever, via an email. If a parent has to come in for a PPT, you need somebody to be there to answer the door, to run the, the guidance department, all of those kind of things. I have stood at the front door, as many of you have, I'm sure, pushing that button, you know, I'm sure Ilda has as well, pushing that button, and the one person who's running that front office is running off copies, or running this, or answering this, or something like that.
It's a lot more high-touch than it is tech.
Right. Education is, is not a, it's a business, but it's not a business in that you can answer a parent's request, or a meeting, or something like that via an email. So those are reasons to make sure that while cutting costs, we don't leave somebody standing in the snow pushing that button to get buzzed in. And there was a whole discussion recently in social media about how people get buzzed in, and nobody asks where they're there, or where they're going, and stuff like that, a security issue in, in light of the recent, the shooting and stuff like that. And, because sometimes she's just running by, hitting the buzzer, and hoping that the rest of the building isn't on fire, kind of thing. So these are reasons that you can't necessarily cut so, so much of this to the bare bone. Totally different topic. We used to have a legal time line item on here, and I'm assuming now it's under professional services.
Sorry, what page are you on?
I'm on page 29 still. And, um, the number from central services is naturally higher, and I know that we have to pay.
It's 150,000 for legal.
Okay, well, where do you have it, Chris?
It's under contract services.
Contract services.
Contract services?
I believe, yeah.
All right, I have it under professional service, I thought it was under professional services, but if it's under contract services, can we get a breakdown of what this past year, this, the last year you have, what the actuals were?
It's, it's, I can give you that.
Okay.
And it's sort of dependent on the, the cycle with contract renewals.
Right.
So some years we'll have less, and some years more. Last year, or this year, did we have three or four? We had the maintenance workers, the nurses, the paros, and tutors, and admin.
All right, we just get a history, it doesn't have to be a breakdown of what everything, you know, every time we call, this committee or something like that, but...
In a three-year cycle, or whatever, what's, what are the...
Yeah, because contracts are about three or four years, so maybe a three or four-year cycle of what it's been, just so we can see, you know, foregestimates, that's all. And I know that, you know, it can vary, uh...
What, what are the teachers in the phone?
Yeah, we have teachers in the phone, teachers start in August, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a big one.
If we saw, if we saw like a four-year history, we'd get a sense of...
Of what it costs, exactly.
What the pattern is.
And what that, what that other breakdown then is in contract services and professional services.
Okay.
Because professional services is 1.2 million for central office, and I don't know what that entails and what that breakdown is.
So that include all the PD for the schools, all those on central office budget, this include everything that the PD is, is done for the school. What number do you have?
I'll give you a breakdown.
That's line 200 under special purpose funds, which is a second table on page 29. No, I'm sorry, it's line 580, professional services is line 580.
What page, I'm sorry?
Page 29 in the budget book that I have.
Yeah, yeah.
The second table, five, line item 580, professional services.
And the special purpose fund?
Yeah, so those are money that's coming out of the grant, but still, it's money.
Right.
But those are all, would be all your PDs and your, your interventions and all of those things there.
Okay. Okay. And lastly, can I just finish, Melissa? Yeah, yeah. Lastly, um, we approved a new path contract for half-year for sixty thousand dollars, which I would assume next year would be a whole year. And in light of last year, last night's, um, board retreat, I'm assuming that some of that had to do with what Mr. Camacho presented. Some of that would dovetail in with the path, um, the plan we have for path, with the discipline and attendance and stuff.
Right.
Where is that anywhere in this lovely book?
We didn't put, we didn't put alternative schools separately this year.
Okay.
Like, because last year, we started mid-year, so we put it, the new initiative was alternative school. We did not put it separately. Those are line items. Chris, where did you put it? I told you to put it in instruction, I mean, instructional program or something. I think we put it in one of the programs. So we didn't put it on a separate line item.
Did we put a full year of funding in?
We did, we did put.
That would be like a hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty would be a full year.
I think it was a hundred and fifty for it.
Plus the administrator halftime.
Okay.
So that administrator is counted somewhere else already, because they work for us already. So I counted it separately.
Well, that's almost like running a separate school. It's gonna have, you know, its own kind of set of expenses, and I'd like to see where that comes out of. You don't, you don't have to tell me right tonight. I understand that we're throwing a lot at you.
Well, the, the funds for the alternative school come out of the general fund budget as fund for, like, one of the schools, for those putting in general fund budget. And then the administrator is already in the district, so it's part, I think it's part HR, part central, no, we put our part HR, point five and point five.
She's, she's just asking where is it reflected in the budget?
In the budget, okay.
And what's the total amount?
Right.
So we make sure there's enough.
And if it's under instructional, then it shouldn't be under central office. So if she's halftime at central office, which is, I know who the person is, it's been her traditional role, halftime should fall under instructional, too. It shouldn't all fund, fall under central office.
Maybe it should fall on the high school.
Because that changes our percentages, you know what I'm saying, on how much we're spending on central office versus buildings, and that should be accurate as well.
So maybe she should fall on the, on the high school.
This is Katie Firth?
Yeah, yeah. So maybe she should, we should put her in the high school.
I'll take, I'll look at that. I think.
We have, we have her under central office, but she's right, maybe we should put her high school, because those kids are high school.
Half, half, yeah. Half of her salary should come from.
High school.
Wherever we're putting this path, um, initiative, so, the alternative school. I'm done, thank you.
Melissa.
So just listening to a little bit there about PD, and I noticed that it looks like probably the majority of our professional development is paid through grants, because I saw a lot of it listed in the grants in the back.
Correct.
But how much do we budget for? How much did we pay out of the last year for PD?
Well, I can get to that number of last year. We budgeted the majority of the grants, we brought the PD definitely out of alliance grants, out of Title I grants, and the bulk of the, also the majority of the PD, I mean, comes out of the alliance grant. Either math initiative, or reading initiative, come out of alliance. So I can get to that exact number.
Okay, thank you.
And that goes to the state and have to be approved by the state. So we send that plan in, and the state is the one that approve that.
To approve how we're spending the grant money, or how we're spending our, okay, both?
They have to prove how we're spending the grant money, and they have to prove the initiative that we have are aligned to the grant money.
Oh, okay.
So, um, we do that early on and send it to them, and they have to give us an approval for that.
Thank you.
And they're very strict with, very strict with that.
What is the dues and fees on, on page twenty-nine, line eight-ten, the general fund?
Um, those are, um, people are, um, members of certain, um, licenses.
Arcade membership probably falls under stuff like that.
And that's the most expensive one of all.
But that's always an issue, because you have professionals, and you need to make sure that they're up to.
Certification.
Certification standards, I mean, requirements.
Mind-boggling how much it ends up costing, isn't it?
It's not magazines. Anything else?
Okay, I, I have a, a proposal that it, I think it might be helpful if we could get a, uh, spreadsheet sent to us that starts with a, uh, two million forty-eight thousand number that's, that's on page twenty-three of the budget book. And then, as a line for all of these little adds or subtracts in these various scenarios, so that we can play with the scenarios ourselves, if you send us all these, you just send us a, a spreadsheet that's.
Excuse me, doctor, which page, I'm sorry, I didn't.
He's saying on page twenty-three.
Page twenty-three, you've got, you've got a proposed, that's the starting, kind of a starting point budget, right? And it's a, it, at that point, I think it's a.
The change you're saying, the two oh four eight.
It's a, it's a five point three percent increase, or something like that?
Four point three.
Four point three.
No, the one in the book, the one on page twenty-three?
Two oh four eight.
Yes.
Two million forty-eight thousand thirty-six.
Four point three is four point three.
It should be four point three.
Is four point three?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and so. And that one, on one sheet, all the.
Well, you start, what I'm saying is that, is that we, we'll start with something, and then, and then give us all these little.
Chris, you were not.
All the items.
You, you did not do this. I, this is, you're right.
The question is, is.
What percent do you want to present?
Let us figure out for ourselves which of these proposed changes we want to add or subtract from the budget, and see, and see how well we can each do at getting a believable total number.
So, so those looking at the general fund, not the.
Yeah, I'm talking about the general fund.
The general, that's what needs to be approved.
This doesn't have all the scenarios on it.
No, 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 no. This is all the scenarios.
No, this is.
No, I'm not talking, I'm not talking.
No, no, one, two, three, those are the ones today, how we arrived to the one today.
Oh.
Okay.
But Murphy's asking for.
Okay, so this is the budget book number at four point three three.
And then how, yeah.
And then, and then if, if we have, okay.
In each scenario, there are a bunch of options for additions and.
So the options are in here, this is those the money. The options are in here, this is those the money.
Yeah, I think that's a straightforward request.
What I want is a spreadsheet that basically has all of these options, you know, just a line of them, where you can basically.
Pick and choose.
One page, where, where, where we can play with it, where we can take them out, put them back in, change the size of them, and then see what happens to the, the total.
So put the full technology in?
Put the full technology in, and then let us choose to take it out.
All the options.
Full part.
And that way, we can kind of play around with our own options and.
Substitutes, no substitutes.
So I don't think we have an issue. Will Mr. Johnson be joining us next Wednesday?
So I don't have an issue with that, but one important point is that if we're gonna send you those, we have to discuss when you're giving those, your feedback back, because that's important.
We have to, when, the book is due.
To the town, or to us?
To us.
Well, Dr. Garcia is supposed to make her final presentation next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. So that means that I need your feedback back.
By early next week.
Well, that's why, that's why.
By Friday. So you're not gonna get.
Friday is impossible.
That's tomorrow. Tomorrow's Friday.
So you have to go into us by Monday?
Monday.
By Monday.
And then, so we can filter through the changes.
Yeah.
So that's why, if you, if you give us a spreadsheet, then we can kind of go through, and then we can say, here's how it looks, that each of us send it to you, and you can kind of see, you know, what.
Okay, but there's some logistic about this.
But there may not be agreement on those different.
Probably not.
That's what I said.
And they can't be, they can't be meetings. We can't have separate meetings, so we can't discuss this in email, so.
Right.
But, but, so I am very, um, I'm very, I'm pushing a little bit, because since I have to bring it back to you by Wednesday, so I need to know what would be your logistic. How are you going to come up to a consensus? Because we, we could get nine pieces of paper from our board members with different suggestions.
Or you could get two, and everybody else is just gonna come to the meeting.
Exactly. So I need to know, how do we agree, how do we accept your suggestion? If I will get one from all of you? Or how's this gonna work?
No, that's not gonna, as Mrs. Lambert points out, we can't, we can't, we can't legally collude.
Right.
Not without having a special meeting.
We have to be transparent.
Can we meet on Monday? I know nobody likes to do an extra meeting, but if that's what we had to do, like, I could meet at, like, seven on Monday.
I'll be in Boston on Monday.
Okay.
Well, if we got the spreadsheet, you could communicate your opinion to Lynn and Dr. Garcia. I don't know about the members who aren't here, how, how they will feel. They haven't heard all of this information, so some of them may come from left field, asking questions that have already been discussed tonight, too, which is a concern. But Monday, those of us that want to appear, you can send yours to Lynn, and Lynn can say, Dr. Sewell feels, you can send it to all of us, and as long as we don't respond, we have your opinion. But nobody can respond to that.
Yes.
We could just say, Murphy says this, we think this, and then you're gonna have to go with what the group decides, that's all. It's budget season. But here is what I've said before, and I will say it again, we should have this, this second budget workshop at least two weeks prior to when you have to make your presentation, because every year, we come up against this deadline. You have to make your presentation, and we're meeting the week before, and there's either not time, or it's a scheduling nightmare to get another meeting in, because we still have questions and concerns. Seeing these new ones now has put, and I have said before at meetings, I don't do numbers well. I have to sit down and digest this a little bit before I can make these kind of decisions. If I had to vote right now, I would say, no, nope, I'm voting against this budget, because I have forty-two different scenarios now running through my head of adding and subtracting, and I can't comprehensively say I know what I'm voting on right this second.
Point well taken, but I, every year.
I know you start in October.
I had a director that does budget for two institutions, we're counting here, and so that's the dilemma. He's not only mine.
Right.
So I can't, I don't get to see him all the time, or, so that's an issue.
Yeah, okay, but.
Point well taken, so, but right now, we're dealing with the reality of getting what we need to get done by the twenty-eighth. I mean, by the end of that meeting on the twenty-eighth.
We're actually voting on the budget on March twelfth, correct?
Yes, right.
So even, even though she makes the presentation on the twenty-eighth, it's not, it's not locked in concrete at that point.
I, I, I know.
So, so we.
But let's be fair, what she's gonna present on Wednesday is what's gonna go out to the people in this town, as what we've, what she, where her proposal is, and that's gonna be our first official salvo on the budget season.
Yes, I know.
These have just been discussions, and we've been pretty clear on that.
But it, it seems to me the easiest way for you to get feedback from all of these different scenarios is, okay, so like, one of the, one of the things in here is, uh, you know, uh, uh, let's see, decrease ICE intervention is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, right? So some of us will put, put that in, some of us will prefer something else, but you can at least get a count of how many board members send you back, and, and say, no, don't cut that, or do cut that, and, and put in something else instead. You also get a sense of where each of us ends up in terms of how much we're willing to try and go to the Board of Finance with. I can, I can, some board members will be willing to ask the Board of Finance for more than other board members will, so you'll get a sense of at least where we're at. It's still your budget. We have to approve it, but.
We need to approve, have to be approved by the board, so we need you, then when you do a suggestion.
But you need, but, but you need as much information as you can about where members of the board are at.
Imagine I wanna send a, you guys, you're not gonna approve.
Okay, we're getting a little circular there.
So do we have to approve this at our meeting on the seventh, because it's due to the town by the twelfth?
Yeah.
So that's a week last. Six days last.
No, I thought it was due to the town on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth.
We have our meeting on the seventh. We don't have a meeting that I know of on the twelfth, do we?
No, no, that would be.
So we have to approve it on the seventh, or we have to set a special meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, the seventh is when we have to.
So we have a meeting next Wednesday.
When Dr. Garcia formally presents.
When Dr. Garcia presents, we can still change things.
Yes, yes.
But we have one week at that point.
Right, right.
So we all have to come in with some kind of direction.
Yeah.
Not kind of scattered all over the place, seven different options right now of different things. We have to kind of give her a direction to make the presentation, so then we can make tweaks at that point, not overhauls. That's, again, my opinion.
Not adding seven and, seven and eighty, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the budget.
You will never miss a budget meeting again, I promise you.
Never, never again.
Yeah, you're right.
So.
That was an emergency, though.
So Melissa's made the suggestion that we have another meeting, um, for those who can't attend, and that if, say, Murphy's not gonna be here next Monday, but he could get his input to votes, um, what do people think about that idea?
I can be here, I can't do anything earlier than probably six-thirty or seven.
I can't do anything earlier than seven, so.
I can't do anything, so not parent advisory. I have my parent advisory group from six to seven, so I'd have to be at seven. Not parent advisory.
Is that possible for you?
Seven on Monday?
Yeah.
Possibly. I have something on my calendar, but.
Are you supposed to be a parent advisory?
No, I have something on here. I'm trying to figure out what it is. For Monday. Municipal meeting?
So, pardon?
I have a municipal training.
Oh, they're doing a training on, on what is economic development.
Oh, that's right.
And you've invited people to that.
Oh, okay. Well, I could come on.
But that's early, right?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Yeah, I could be here for seven Monday.
Those of us who, we, we could notice it as a working session on the budget, um, and we can.
If there's gonna be more than three of us, we just have to put an agenda out saying, open budget workshop meeting number three, adjourned, so.
I think it's the same agenda that we did for today.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, the spreadsheet's not gonna be very big. It'll be five or six different line items underneath.
Well, take into account the seven, the seven scenarios that Dr. Garcia has sent us.
Starting at the four point three three.
And just what each of those have for financial.
No, no, Chris, no, not starting at four point three three. Four point three three is scenario four. They want it from a scenario one.
Right.
So that's that, before that.
We want everything in, what we need, and then what, we are gonna decide what should be pulled out.
They want it from a scenario one.
We're added.
We're gonna, we're gonna have an opinion about what should be pulled out.
So the starting point is not what Dr. Sewell said, it's before that.
Okay, yeah, all right.
This is the starting point.
That is four point three three.
That's the four point three three.
I think that's a, that's, that's.
What, what we're turning about.
A lot of decisions to begin with.
Scenario one through seven.
Yeah, scenario, go back to pre-scenario one, before we start applying anything else, then, I guess.
The, the book, okay, let's get this clear. The book started at the five point three. That's where you guys want to start.
Dr. Sewell said, take the two million forty-eight and, and line up what we have from four to seven.
That turns out that's less than.
That's not a lot of things, and that's pretty weighty to begin with.
What we're hearing, just for the purposes of this exercise, is to start with scenario, all the scenarios, bottom lines, and then what the movable pieces are that have been suggested, listed all in one place, and people can slice and dice however they want.
Yeah. If you really start with scenario one, you're starting with three million five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, or a seven and a half percent increase, and then you've cut back a lot of stuff from that, before you get down to scenario seven. But, but it's basically all those little lines.
We have all the stuff here, though, Mur.
Yeah. Well, yeah, except that, if, if you, if you say, if you get down into this thing, and you say, well, as I, as I started out, I wanna keep the whole transportation budget. I wanna cut somewhere else for that, then I agree with Mrs. Lambert, that we need to have the technology budget in the operating budget.
I really wish I had a dollar for every time you said that, because I'd pay for the high school renovation in cash, I'm telling you.
So, but what I'm saying is that all the options are already in this document.
In the scenarios.
They're in all the scenarios. You just have to go in.
Check them off.
Yeah, yeah, if I have the spreadsheet that's got all these in there, then I can create, like, I can mix and match.
I just don't know whether they'll be able to get us a spreadsheet tomorrow that has all that in there.
It's not difficult. I can get you a spreadsheet.
We already have to have the line items lined up somewhere.
It's just a matter of, the more options, the more time it takes to condense it and change it.
All we're doing is just, all you're doing is just listing all these.
Yeah, I don't.
Just lift the rules and columns out of here and paste them in.
I'm not concerned about that. I'm more concerned about.
Consensus.
When we get the response from them, their feedback.
Well, you obviously need it Monday, you need it Monday.
We're gonna meet Monday night, at seven o'clock, to have a budget working meeting. I mean, it's really for us to talk among ourselves.
Because I'd have to reverse some of the changes I've already made in the book, because you're gonna say, hey, go with earlier options that are already at this level. So it's kind of uncooking some of the.
Can we have Ms. Teste send out an email first thing tomorrow morning to everybody to let them know what we decided tonight?
Yeah, I wrote it, I'm ready.
And she'll notice it, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry to ask for another meeting, but it's better that we sort of.
It's your budget.
We have to sell it to the town at some point, so. Would be nice if it passed the first time.
Dr. Garcia, have you reached out to the PAC to invite them on Wednesday?
I have in a meeting. I forgot one day is on my, the whole FGC, the whole YGC is on my calendar.
No, 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 the PAC.
No, I haven't reached out to them yet.
Because the PAC has been instrumental in passing our budgets, the high school referendum, that kind of stuff, and we don't wanna alienate them, and.
No, they're not alienated. I've been in contact with them, not about this, but I really have a meeting with my YGC. I don't know when, but I have one on my calendar. But I know he's already here.
I'm gonna ask the boards, uh, if the board is willing to listen to a two-minute, three-minute presentation from Mr. Edelman, who's been sitting here during the meeting. It's up to you guys.
I don't see why not. Sure.
Okay.
It's essentially public comment, yes?
He's on the agenda.
Hello, I'm Stephen Edelman from Wyndham Center.
Pull the mic up so that you get recorded, since we're televising.
All right.
Thanks.
With daughters finishing high school, I have learned much about selective college admission over the last few years. The Yale Alumni Magazine reports that nineteen percent of the class enters substantially on the basis of athletic ability, and that similar ratios apply to the rest of the Ivy League. The balance of the class must therefore have nearly perfect academic records to balance the lesser academic attainment of athletic admits. A commitment to geographic diversity makes admission for disfavored Connecticut students even more daunting. In addition, a senior at a private school such as Andover, Exeter, or St. Paul's, has a much greater chance of admission than an, than a, um, public school academic peer. This confluence of factors makes admission to a top college on academics, academics alone, virtually impossible for someone from Wyndham. This leaves athletic admission as a more viable route for a Wyndham student to gain admission to a selective college. Football, basketball, and rowing usually constitute the highest-profile sports at selective colleges. Nearly every high school, public and private, field football and basketball teams, making recruitment competition for these sports intense. Rowing has a far smaller pool of talent, because far fewer high schools have rowing teams, increasing recruitment likelihood. Unlike football, crew coaches recruit both girls and boys. Unlike basketball, crew coaches recruit a significantly larger number, uh, larger number of athletes. I have shells, a trailer, a truck, a launch site, and rowing expertise. The Shetucket offers a wonderful rowing venue. With a one-time expense of about thirty thousand dollars to buy a dock and equipment, Wyndham High School could boat a rowing team. Students who never considered participating in athletics will join. Athletics who participate in fallen winter sports will up their games. The focus and dedication required for rowing will carry over into the classroom. Wyndham Orson will learn unparalleled lessons in teamwork. If a program started this spring, Wyndham High School would find itself in a good position to make a real splash among Connecticut's top high schools at the Connecticut Public High School Rowing Association Championship next year. If given a chance to reach high, Wyndham High School crew will provide a marvelous experience for its participants, and burnish the reputations of both the school and town. I did not time that.
Oh, you, you were under time, thank you.
Okay.
So essentially, the request is, can we figure out a way to find thirty thousand, thirty to thirty-five thousand in the education, or the sports budget to launch a, uh, a crew team, and, and Mr. Edelman is generously willing to donate the expensive stuff, the shells, the trailer, and the, and the, and the oars, so.
Are we entertaining conversation here?
Well, it's not.
Is it on the agenda, as an action item, or as a?
We don't have discussion after a public comment, but, um, the, there was not, the meeting was not noticed to have public comment, so we could do whatever we want.
It is, it is question, I think it says.
Questions and answers.
Questions and answers, and it's ambiguous as to who gets to ask questions.
Right.
So the athletic budget this year goes down by, for next year, goes down by $20,750, that's according to page 111 of the budget book that we were provided.
Well, this is your program, I'm sorry.
So, I know in the past few years we've cut gymnastics, field hockey, I don't know that we've cut anything else.
We have not, we have not cut them, they have, students have not enrolled in them, so we didn't have students to-
Okay, they're, they're not currently being provided.
Right, because we don't have students, right.
Due to lack of enrollment, due to whatever the reasons are, but cut just for, not because of budget reasons, but because of lack of involvement.
Students, right.
Right, exactly. I've also heard discussion amongst students in the building about a rugby team. Now, besides the supplies that Mr. Edelman, we have to make sure that the, and I mean this in no disrespect, that you're certified with CIAC, all of those kind of things, there's liability, that kind of stuff, the same thing with rugby. I have no problem with adding sports, because certainly in Wyndham, sports give students a reason to come to school and a leg up. Dr. Youngbrook seems to have a concern, or Gerlin seems to have a concern.
A lot of the sports, they're under the teacher's contract and have, there's an impact bargaining issue that we would have to negotiate for whether they're certified or non-certified staff, there's a process in which to add a sport that's outlined in the teacher's contract.
Okay, so that's something we'd have to look into.
Yeah.
Rowing is not a CIAC sport.
Okay, but you still have to be a certified coach, in, for Wyndham, you still have to be a certified coach, first aid, CPR, coaching.
I have the certification, or have had them, I'm not sure where they're currently.
Right, we have to make sure they're current, those are things that we have to do.
I think what we're hearing is it may not-
I'm not against this, I'm certainly for-
It may not be so simple to do it for this spring.
Does crew generally take place in the spring?
Yes.
Okay, I'm ignorant to that, I know EO, I think, has a crew team, I'm ignorant to.
EO, for the spring would be extremely difficult to get this.
It's not impossible, we have two months before the spring, spring season starts, and while you'd probably like to start practicing a little bit earlier, if it took us that long to get it into place, it's better than not at all.
Right, it's just, at this point, it would be pretty casual, just to find out interest and put a few votes out, because the membership is not in for the CPS, the Connecticut Public School Rowing Association for this year, but I have contacts and can do some informal things, and it's a kind of a chance to ease in and work out the bugs.
So is it possible to look at starting it as a club for this year, and then if there is-
It's always a club sport, because it's not CIAC-recognized.
It's not CIAC-recognized.
So there's no competition, there's no that kind of stuff?
No, there is, it's very well organized, but not as, not under the auspices of the CIAC.
Where would we find the $30,000 in the current budget to do that?
I don't know.
Just a question, good question.
Can we gauge interest in the high school?
I feel the first step is, because students are interested in-
There has been some discussion with Mr. Resley already about this.
Yeah, we, I had a conversation with Mr. Edelman before, yes, I had a conversation with Coach Resley, and so the first step is to look at the interest of the students first.
Yeah.
Well, how would that proceed? How would that-
Like, if some of them don't even know, ever been in a boat in their lives.
That's what I'm just saying, make sure they know what crew is.
Yeah, they've been in a boat in their lives, so.
I could offer a suggestion, what's a common approach, someone just brings in a shell, plants it outside in the hallway depending on the weather, and people ooh and ah, and they sign up, and you can gauge interest that way.
An eight-ord rowing shell up close is an impressive piece of equipment.
Yes, beautiful, thanks.
So I think we could talk to Mr. Resley, Coach Resley, and have him set up some type of activity opportunities to become aware, because I'm pretty sure some of them have never been in, have seen it maybe on TV, maybe, but not had the opportunity to experience it, so.
The scale up close, it's 60 feet of boat.
So meanwhile, Mr. Johnson, we're talking about the current budget and whether or not there's a, there's a surplus somewhere where we can squeeze 30,000 to 35,000 out of it.
We found $20,000 for Berra's lottery this year, so it shouldn't be too onerous.
Again, it's, it's, that can be worked in, but some of the bigger questions like technology I'm asking you to come to terms with.
So I think what we're hearing is that there could be some exploratory conversations, some gauging of whether or not there's interest among the student populations, but in the long term, we'd need to, we'd need to have somebody come back to us, I think, with a more report on that, and if there are contract issues that we need to deal with.
I'm pretty sure, I am positive we'll have to deal with contract issue as a coach, whatever magnitude it is, I am positive, we have to, but I think the first step is, is the interest of the students, and, you know, this is the month of February already, so, spring sports start when?
In March.
In March, so I don't know, it started in March, and this is already February 22nd, 23rd? I don't know how much time that gave us to really start it in the spring, because actually we're talking only a week, March is, okay, a week from now. Definitely we can get interest, I mean, gauge the interest of the students, I don't know, you know, Gerlin, how much time it will take us once we get into students and the negotiation.
Get the negotiations and have any of the view and all that.
And then I'm pretty sure that there are other guidelines that we have to look at, safety of students and things like that, and this is, you know, every sports have their guidelines, and I'm pretty sure there's some guideline here, I'm a little nervous of sending kids out there on the lake in a boat, I'm pretty sure, we'll have to make sure that the district have all the guidelines, I'm pretty sure we have to look at, our attorney will have to look at things, so.
So you're, so what you're hearing is it's a little more complicated than it may seem on the face of things, but we're, we're going to pursue having conversations and find out more.
So what, tomorrow's meeting, Mr. Resley, tomorrow?
There's just no way that I can see us giving you a commitment tonight that we will definitely move forward.
Oh, sure, I know, but it would be nice if we could, maybe in the next few days, figure out a date I can just at least bring some of the equipment in, people could look at it, and-
Maybe during lunches or something, that way you could be near the equipment, so I certainly don't want to leave it untended, and that would be difficult in the hallways or something like that, but if you want to communicate a few lunch periods or something like that, I don't know what your schedule looks like.
Well, I think, should work with the staff or figure out what makes-
So the first thing I want to speak is to the principal of the school, number one, and Coach Resley, let's not start there, before I do anything.
Okay. How many people do you need for a rowing team? Or ideally?
Okay, well, okay, well, as many as you have.
As many.
At least eight.
At least eight.
The CPA, the, the real competition, there are, the real competitions center around